We have another. Okay, this meeting is being recorded. I just want everybody to know. Okay, here we go. So, did everybody get an opportunity to read the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, would someone like to approve the minutes if there are no corrections or additions?
So approved.
Okay, who is that Gwen? Because I want to check. So Debbie, is Debbie here? Because Debbie's supposed to be taking minutes and she's not here. So I just want to check this. Hold on a minute. So Risa, where are you?
I'm here.
Do you mind? Could you take minutes and then Debbie will take your turn next time? I just want to make sure. Okay.
All right.
Would Debbie all right?
I'm kind of multitasking while I'm at the meeting. Is there somebody else who could possibly?
You shouldn't be multitasking because you're at a meeting. Your head is here because it's real important. Well, let's see. Who's the next one? Lucy, where's Lucy? Would you mind? I can't hear you. You're on mute.
I can't. As I told you, I have to leave early, so.
Oh, I didn't hear that. Okay, you have to. What time do you have to leave?
I have to leave by six.
Well, that's too bad because you know, we're having a presentation by the library committee. Really important. I don't know if you got. So if you had any suggestions or recommendations after looking at the information, I would want to know it before you left so that we could ask those questions. And let me go back and finish what we were on with the minutes. So the first person who approved them was, I didn't hear Gwen, were you the one who approved?
Yes.
And who's second? Okay, Joanne. So was Gwen and Joanne. So I need somebody to volunteer for the minutes tonight and then they can swap with Debbie for the next time she does it. If Risa can't, you can't do it, Risa. Is that?
If somebody else could do it, it would be really helpful. But if somebody can't, then I will do it.
Okay.
I'll do them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Daria. I can do them next time.
Okay, thank you, Dari. You did very nice minutes, her minutes, by the way. Daria did last week's minutes and they were superb, very well detailed. Okay, so I'll put Daria there. Okay, so the minutes are approved. All in agreement? Please raise your hand. Okay, any negatives, any abstentions? No, so approved. Okay, so we're going to go into business. I'm not going to sound rushy, but I do want to try to cover everything and hopefully as many people be here for this participation in the library presentation. So the most important things, the planning, the annuals, we got everything done in the town center. We were done. Thank you, the committee for coming at eight o'clock. By 10 o'clock, we were done. And Daria and Eva stayed and myself. And for the last two hours, we did some cleaning up and finished the town center. So all in all, we were done by our timeframe of being done by noon. I did go and water. They watered the town area, town hall. And I watered the other areas a little wilty, but I'm hoping that they made a revival. I did order one more package of flat of annuals to plant at the electronic sign because some of them did not look very good. And I just want to make sure because that's such a key spot. So the baskets go up on Thursday, the 10th, well, at 10:00 AM. So Eva and I are going to put them in the truck and we're going to bring them down to town hall. And Dan has agreed, I'm going to let him know that he's going to provide somebody who can lift them, will hold them, and they'll lift them and put them on the hooks. They're quite heavy and very big because I grew them over the winter. They're all in flowers. So I think you'll be all pleasantly surprised. And then Eva was the one who was responsible last year for making sure they looked so beautiful. Okay, now here's the one I want to make sure we talk about. Well, two things. I'd like Henriette and Gwen did an excellent job of getting a volunteer list for us. And we have volunteers scheduled for Saturday, but they're projecting rain for Friday and Saturday. And I'd like to have a backup plan. I mean, you know, every time they've projected rain, it has not rained. So if it's cloudy and a few sprinkles, I can see us going because we don't have, you know, we have a third of what we had to do for the town center. So it's not a lot. We have the fire department, excuse me, not the fire department, the police department, the swimming pool, the municipal pool, and the Mary Hill Green. And the idea was that Gwen, and maybe Gwen, if you can do this on Thursday, you and I and Eva and what's her name? The woman who lives near you?
Yeah, I forgot her name.
Yeah. Gosh, I can't remember her name, but you know who I'm talking about.
Yes.
A member of the Zito family. We would pick her up and bring her over there. And that would just be a special thing. And I think we could handle that very easily. So we could get that done on Thursday. A lot is already growing at the Mary Hill Green. That leaves us the swimming pool. Now, the swimming pool doesn't open until June, so we could quite conceivably wait till the following week and do it if we have to because I'm not worried about that. That just leaves the police department. And I'd really like to get that in. So my thought is, can we do it Wednesday or Thursday if we still see rain in the forecast or Sunday? But we have to have it done before Monday because Monday is Memorial Day. And people will be in the town center and they will pass that probably because it's on Park Avenue. So that would be nice to have that one area planted if we can.
Sharon, if we're going to do it on Thursday, I have to do it at like eight o'clock. I mean.
Eight o'clock in the morning?
I have an appointment, yeah.
Well, the only thing is, we're going to be at nine o'clock putting all the plants in the truck. So that may not work for us. We were thinking more of doing it in the afternoon.
Oh, the afternoon works for me Thursday.
Yeah, so we would be finished probably by 10:30 or so, or 11:00, anytime after 11:00.
Wait, say it again. I'm sorry. I missed.
Are you available on Thursday anytime after 11:00? If we know it's.
After 1:00, I'm going to be available after 1:00.
All right.
Are you talking, excuse me, this Thursday or the Thursday after in case?
No, this coming Thursday.
The 27th.
I could help if you need.
I could help too.
I can help.
Wait, I can't hear. Is that? Wait, let me ask. Henriette said yes?
Yes.
Said yes.
Said yes.
Joanne said yes.
Okay, and Joanne said yes. That's probably all we need.
I'm looking at the latest forecast on Weather Channel. And now Saturday does not look like rain. Friday's the rain day.
Okay, so if that's the case, all of you, we would still do it on Saturday. We have volunteers for Saturday. My biggest concern is we have too many volunteers, you know, and how we deal with that. Okay?
What time would that be on Saturday?
Well, I think we should go with the same times we did last time. They worked really well before it gets hot. The committee was there at eight o'clock. We set all the plants up and the volunteers came at nine, quarter to nine, and we were done within an hour.
It was really great.
It was. It worked out well.
Really, really well.
So I figured if we have enough this time around, we can, if we lay everything out, I can leave a few of you from the committee at the police department and you will be able to guide the volunteers. And then I'll take a few volunteers with Risa and we can go over to Mayor, to the municipal pool and plant that. So those would be the two, I would say. Yes.
It looks like, I'm looking at the volunteer list, and it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five, six, and possibly seven volunteers for Saturday.
Okay.
I have Michelle Adams, Mary Briggs, Hope and Leroy Bruff, Pat Clark, Angeline, Catherine Lyons, and Robert Titus called. He hadn't returned my call before. But Robert Titus called and Michael, I wasn't available. Michael gave him the message about the Saturday planting.
Okay. So out of that, you may have five people show at least. Okay, so with five plus us, we have plenty of people and we can divide up and get that done easily within an hour. Okay, I think.
I think so too.
Yes, so let's, let's, if you're okay with it, unless we see the weather changes, let's go for Saturday since we do have people who wanted to volunteer.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think, since we've already got the volunteers out there, I don't think we should go changing it again. You know what I mean?
No, I agree. I just was concerned if it rained, we would, didn't.
Oh, okay.
Weather's changing. You don't want to get to the hot weather.
No, no, I hear you.
So, all right, we'll stick with that. And Joanne and those who weren't there last week, eight o'clock, and we'll meet at the police department and we'll go from there. So bring your.
I apologize. I couldn't be there last week, but we were away two weeks for two of the past events we've been away. But now we're home for good, so.
Okay, well, that's great. So now you know. And you know, who comes, it's great. And those like, like for Lucy, she works, but she's going to help at times when she's available. So I try to fit in everybody to a time as best I can that works. So that, just let me know when you have issues if you can't be there. But I was very happy. Everyone who came was just wonderful. You knew what to do. It was really, you know, I was very pleased. The hardest part was getting everything watered. And we'll have to work on that with Dan. You know, we may have to ask him at times to use the water truck. But I used my hoses and I was able to reach both areas with the hoses. Oh, and Dan, are you there? He's not there. Okay.
I'm here.
Oh, you're there. You know, when I went to put the hoses into the spigot between the mall and the town green, the box top was open. The flap that closes, it wasn't closed. So I closed.
Well, it wasn't locked. You mean it was like opened up?
It was all the way. Yeah, the door was lying on the ground. I mean, you know.
So someone messed with it between when I talked to you and when you used it.
Okay, that's what I wanted you to know, that it wasn't closed.
Yeah.
So I.
I think we had a zip tie on it.
Yep, nothing was on it. It was lying on the ground. I mean, it wasn't, it was had hinges, but it was on the ground. Okay, so this is good. We're all set with that. I would like to ask Henrietta and Gwen if you could send thank you notes to the people who came on Friday and just let them know how much we appreciated it. If you don't remember who they all were, it was that list except for the young one Gwen that you talked about, Erica, was that her name?
Yeah, no, she couldn't come. She might be coming Saturday.
Okay, but if you know all the people who showed.
Yeah.
If we, I think it'd be really nice. It's just a, you know, a nice little note. We were so happy you came. We got it done in an hour. We hope you'll join us again. Meanwhile, enjoy, you know, the, the plants for the summer. And if you ever want to volunteer, please let us know again.
Could we wait until after Saturday? So we could do, Gwen and I can split up the list and do it.
If you want to do that, okay. And then just get them out. I just didn't want to wait too long, so that, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so you're going to wait and do it after Saturday.
Yeah, we'll do it like after, right after Memorial Day.
Okay, and then Gwen and Eva, we're still on for Thursday, right? Is that?
Thursday, what time? You're talking about Mary Hill?
Yeah, Mary Hill and the library. So maybe Eva and I will go to the library. And by the time you get there at one o'clock, I will be there. And you, we will ask, I will call Mrs. Darlington.
Okay.
But you will pick her up, right? So we'll make arrangements offline of what.
Well, okay.
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 If you need more help. What, what are you doing at Mary Hill and the library?
So we're going to plant the library box, the planter in the back. And then at Mary Hill, we're going to finish doing the summer plantings there. And I can't, Mrs. Darlington, is that her last name?
Yeah, Diana Darlington.
Diane, I'm sorry. So Diana Darlington, we're going to pick her up because she, she's like in her 80s and she doesn't have transportation, but she really wanted to help. So she lives near, she lives near the park. So Gwen graciously volunteered to pick her up. And we thought it would be nice for a few of us to help her. And we, we do that. It's a small enough project that she could participate.
Sharon, if you need more help for Mary Hill, I can, I'm available too.
Okay, all right. I'll let you know, Henrietta. Okay, that would be great.
I haven't been in the minutes that Mary Hill, we're doing Mary Hill on Saturday.
No, we're going to change it to Thursday.
Oh, okay.
We're only going to do the swimming pool and the police department.
Okay, okay. So Mary Hill is on Thursday. All right.
When are we doing Prasor Library?
Prasor Library has already been done.
Oh, okay.
That was done by Tatiana.
Tatiana, okay.
And then I remember and Joanna and maybe Debbie and a few of us, we will assist Tatiana doing the year with the library. We'll, we'll help her when she needs it because she works and, you know, we can do some stuff there too. And I have another little project. So at the corner where there was an ash tree at the corner of Bloomfield Avenue and Park Avenue, across from the town green, they took down an ash tree. And there's a big circle. And right now it has nothing in it but soil. And Dan and I discussed it. And we said that just for this year, we could plant it because it's too late to seed it. And I don't know if the state's going to seed it or Dan. But since it's so late to seed it, we thought it would be nice to put flowers there. And we have a lot of cannes.
I was thinking cannes, yeah.
More zinnias. So I thought we could do an outer circle of zinnias low and then plant the cannes in the middle.
I think that would look nice.
And Dan said he would mulch it. Right, Dan?
Right.
Right, okay. Okay, so that's the corner. And we can do that the following week after Memorial Day because I don't think we'll have it ready in time. So I don't know, Dan, you don't, you wouldn't have time to mulch that before Memorial Day, would you?
Um, yeah, it's not out of the question. Just that little corner, I could probably get that done.
Okay, well, maybe if you.
If you guys want to try and get it planted, I'll, I'll, I'll try and get it done.
Okay, then maybe we can plant it because we've already got the cannes. And if you mulch it, we'll just dig back. As long as that soil's loose, we'll just dig back the mulch and like we've been doing, and then just cover the mulch back up.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. All right. All right, excellent. Any other questions about that? Okay, so moving right along, we're talking about the notable landscape that committee is. Eva, do you want to say anything about that? Want to bring us up to date?
Yes, this year we're starting a bit earlier. We're starting June 1st. We're opening up the nomination period as opposed to last year, late June. Tomorrow I'll be sending to the town manager the, something so that they can put on the town website on the, as an event that, that we're starting the nomination period for the notable landscape awards, as well as updating the forms that are currently on our, our page, the BBC page on the town website because the forums are from last year. So I'm sending him the updated ones for this year. And then, as I said, asking him to, to put in an announcement on both the town, the, the front page, as well as on our page, just announcing that we are starting to accept nominations for the awards. I'm going to be working with Debbie later this week about other types of kind of launch activities because I think we're going to want to put something in the Bloomfield Messenger. I'm going to ask leisure, leisures, I don't know who's on the distribution list of leisure services when they announce different things going on in town. But I'd like then also to send out something about the notable landscapes. And, and then as well as getting it onto Instagram. So that's the next step that we're going to be working on is trying to get awareness about the awards out there. In terms of judges, Sharon had come up with the suggestion of a woman by the name of Nancy Bet Brennick. And she used to be, I think, was she the president of the Connecticut Horticultural Society?
Yes.
And I just looked at their website today and she's still part of the Connecticut Horticultural Society, but now she's the chairman head of the Flower and Garden Show. So I'm going to reach out to her to see whether or not that'd be something that she would agree to do for us. So, and then the other thing, this year we're thinking about having two judges. And the other judge, we're thinking about having maybe someone who had won an award, the notable landscape awarded prior years. I had initially thought of a person who, James White, and he showed up actually at the annual planting last week, but he showed up late. And I kind of threw that idea at him, whether or not he might be interested. But the vibe I got from him was that he probably wouldn't have the time or he probably wouldn't be interested. So I'll follow up with him. But then Sharon had another great idea. Richard Zito, he owns a green machine in Bloomfield. He's a town resident and Green Machine was one of our winners from last year. So not only is he a prior winner, he owns a landscape business, so he's knowledgeable. He's a town resident and he is the grandson of Mary Zito. Is that right? So, um, so Sharon and I are going to, going to work on, she might reach out to him to see whether or not he might be interested. So that's where we are with the judging. So that's my update.
Okay, I just would like to make one suggestion. There's like a four or five Facebook pages, social.
Oh, that's right, Facebook pages, yeah.
They might be good too. I know, you know, if we post one place, like if Gwen or Henriette, then share it on what, we could have like a, what do you call that? When you sent one person, like a loop or something, you know, like we, we post it one place and then you two take it and post it on some of the others. So then they see different people posting it. That, that's a really good way to do it.
What are the different Facebook?
To be asked to share it.
What?
Share it. It's called sharing. So you share with your friends.
Right, Sharon's right, correct.
So what are the different, the different Bloomfield pages?
Well, let me send it to you. I'll just.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I'll probably ask, I don't know, Henrietta, whoever is a member of these different groups to put it out there or share it, or we'll figure all that out. But if you guys are okay with that.
What we do is we share it to one page and then they go to that page.
Okay.
They share it to other pages.
Okay.
Okay, good. That sounds great. All right, thank you for that report. And since.
I'm going to make a comment about the Bloom, just so you know. A lot of the people who've won, they are very competitive now. And they're trying to up their game. So I'm just putting that out there.
Excellent.
You know, I'm just saying about getting someone who won to be a judge. Yes, it's a good idea, but I'm just letting you know. They're out there. I know Angeline is out there upping her game, you know, and a few others.
Yeah.
I have noticed that in my own neighborhood. It's true.
Really?
So just, I just want to put it out there about it. I think it's a great idea, but I'm just, you know, they also love being in, you know, winning. They do.
Yeah.
Or being recognized and they put a lot of work into their stuff.
One thing we have to consider is last year we had over 100 nominations. And some people are on their second and third winning. Because every time you have a new judge, they see the properties because they've been nominated. And they vote on that. And they don't know whether these people have won before or not. So we'll have to discuss that maybe a little further. Like, can you win two years in a row and then you have to take a year off? Or do we have less people nominated this year? It's, now that we've started something that's really becoming popular, it's really hard to dial it back. So just something to consider for our next meeting, I think, and for Eva to think about.
And, and, and I'm not familiar with, I've never been into the senior center, but do they have a posting board? Can we put up like a flyer there? And I, and I went to the library today, Prasor, it's open for the first day today. I may be putting something up there because, you know, you have some people that won't do Facebook, won't check out the website. And, you know, their, their only source of information might be some kind of posting.
They have an email. I forgot the lady's name at the senior center. They send out emails.
Yeah, yeah. I'll give you her, I'll give you her contact info.
Yeah, they, yeah, so sending it that way because they do all their little things that they have like buses and, you know, little trip.
Yeah.
So that's what they use, yes.
All right, and the Leisure Services has a mailing list of about 1,000. And also you have Lucy here. It would be nice to send it out to Seaberry and Duncaster because they've been winners before too.
Absolutely, absolutely. And they're competitive too.
Yes.
I like 200 competitors.
Well, you know, and they up their game and neighbors see it, they're going to try.
I, I, it's really popular. I mean, it's a, it was a great campaign. It's a beautiful thing.
Well, you know, Lucy, what do you think of the idea of maybe when we announce it that we say former winners in this, in, you know, in Duncaster have been and list them or something? Do you think?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I, I think that, you know, I hate to limit it to say that you've won, you can't win against. I think that's wrong, but you don't also want to get into, because again, you have a new set of judges every year. So it's not like it's the same people judging. And so the same, if their garden is that spectacular again that year, I think they deserve to win. So you know, I, I don't think we should limit it that way. But you know, I think that Duncaster did win it. It was a big thing for Duncaster. I mean, all of the residents really took notice of it and were very proud of it. So, you know, I have, I have no problem stirring the fire at Duncaster and possibly at Seaberry or wherever else, you know.
That sounds great.
And driving around. I see a lot of people who've won. You should see them. They are cleaning up and. Really, it's a good thing.
And they have signs out.
Exciting.
Yeah, and last year, I think it was popular and Eva and I agreed we'd do it again, is we divided our town into quadrants. You won't get the same quadrant you got last year because we have a few new members. But everyone will get a piece of Bloomfield to go and judge, okay? We're not judging, you're looking for houses to nominate. And then those names will go into the pool. And then that will be worked with those people who nominate from the town. They'll be sending their nominations either to us at the BBC email address or to Dan and between us. So that's how we get all our names. And that worked really well.
But we won't do that probably kind of till sometime in July, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so it'll be interesting to see. Hopefully we get some more nominations from the community. That'd be nice to see people recognizing other people.
Although I have to tell you, when we were planting trees, there was this lovely house on Rockwell Avenue. It had a beautiful spring garden. It was all in flower and different colors of purples. I don't know if you.
Gwen and I noticed that when we were putting out the flyers.
Oh, okay.
Remember that house, Gwen?
Yes, it was beautiful.
Photos of it, yeah.
Yeah, do you guys know the number? Because I want to make sure, if no one else nominates it, you know, to make sure that we're aware that that one probably should get a nomination.
Well, I will, I'll have to look it up because I took the number when I photographed it. But you also might consider this year, you know, do we ever want to do like best spring garden, best summer garden, best fall?
Ideally, also, the nomination is amazing enough. So I mean, you know, I, I think that, you know, I don't, I wasn't here last year, so I don't really understand how the process, but we had a list of just the nominations that we could put out into the press and different.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
He's been frozen.
All right.
Yeah.
So, good, I'm going to move on because I want to, I want to, because Lucy says she has to leave and I want to make sure if Lucy, it's close to six. Is there anything you want to say? Oh, Lucy, you're frozen. Okay, unmute yourself, Lucy. Can you give us an idea of your questions that you want to ask for the library group? Because they're coming at 6:15 and I want to make sure that you, if you miss this, that you get to ask something.
Well, I, I mean, again, I think, so they're increasing the foot, the, the footprint of the library. So it's going to expand down into what is now the parking lot, right? Is it going to expand to the other sides? And I like the footpath that's going behind it down to Philly Park and around. But how are they going to, isn't there a little river or a little brook in between? Is, how are they going over that to the parking?
Okay, so they're going to explain this to you. I don't know all the details, but there is called Washbrook and it goes from behind the library all the way down to Philly Park.
Right.
And there was planned a bridge that goes from this building. If you looked at the plans, that it goes from the building and goes over to where the Riley Lumber Company is. That would be have parking spaces. There would be some parking and under, under, and handicap parking under the building.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, and they would be parking in the rear. So that, that is, I hope that answered your question. They're going to come and tell you all this stuff, but I, you know.
Right, right.
So you're asking about.
Adjacent to the library, what's going to happen to that, that sort of open, ghastly, horrible?
What are you asking?
Right next to the library, there's that lot that is just sort of open and.
Right next to the north of the library now.
Yeah, north of the library was the former Masonic Hall that was taken over by eminent domain. And that was supposed to be more land for the building of the library. I think if you look in the design, that you will see that that's sort of a one-way exit from the building to out onto
In other words, that, that area is going to be made look nicer than
Well, they don't, that is a question that should come up today by us is they don't, you know, this is just a preliminary design. But it does show some landscaping, not a lot. It does indicate the roundabouts, which maybe Dan will know more about if they're gonna come about. There is money now for the state, so it could come about in two years. We don't know. You know, the state may want to save money on some of the stuff they have to do. So the roundabout save money. But these are questions, you know, they don't indicate a lot of landscaping. And in my discussions with Elizabeth this weekend, one of the things she expressed is being able to have places outdoors where people could go outside the library and sit and they would have wifi, free wifi. So you would be looking for quiet places or a place where you could sit and look at your laptop or something like that.
Lovely.
You know, I didn't see any landscaping for anything like that, so.
Okay. Yeah. But that would be my question is what's happening through the land to the, as you said, north of
North.
Of, of the library. Are there plans to, to landscape that or? What? I mean, one of the, the ideas that we're working now at Dunkaster and, and maybe it could continue. And, and maybe we could think of is we're, we're creating an, an interactive trail. And it's a new type of interactive trail, which will be, and we're writing grants for it. So there would be different stations that you could stop at and you'd use your smartphone or whatever and do a QR code. And it would bring up a menu and you would have, you could select from different activities to do at each site, which might be listen to a piece of music. It could be do an exercise. It could be read a poem or listen to a poem. It could be, this is the flora and fauna that you're looking at while you're at that station and you can select them. So, you know, maybe something like that. I mean, just an idea if that, that was, you know, if they're planning on doing anything with that piece other than.
Yeah, well, okay, that's something we can discuss. As again, as I said, their, their sketches are preliminary. They're looking for input such as what you're asking. And so that these things can be added to the mix. And it does, you know, when it goes to referendum, I think the more positive features it offers, the more likelihood it will pass.
Good, so those are my questions. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, Lucy. All right, BBC, no, tree signage update, Eva.
Yeah, I'll be really quick. Now that all the trees have leafed out, Darius finalized the tree genuses and the species. And so we're working on the actual, what's gonna go on to each label before, obviously, we send it to the printer. And, you know, making progress on the brochure and Darius is working on the descriptive elements that we're gonna have, once they are able to go onto the QR code. And for each tree, she's working on kind of descriptive elements for each of the trees. So all that is a work in progress.
Good, okay. And we're still aiming to do this so that it's completed hopefully by
Oh, you're asking me?
Yeah.
Um, early August.
Okay, early August, okay. Okay, good. All right, does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
Okay, so the Instagram account, I'm happy to report, let me just see, that we've been doing very well with it. And Eva just sent me some new pictures today that I haven't had a chance to look at yet, but I will. We have 91 followers now. So in a year, we, you know, it's been about a year, yeah. And we're, we're getting them, you know, every week, you know, with now, with summer coming, we'll have lots of pictures to post. And my goal is to post something every couple of days if we can, or, you know, so that it's new and, and to get more people to follow. So if you have friends and you, when you, you know, like it, I hope all the committee will like it and follow it. And then encourage, you know, your friends to follow this because it helps us and it helps the town. Because this is our way of letting the town know what we're doing and what the town, how we're beautifying it. And I think that's real important. And Eva is working on, for the notable landscapes, we're also gonna advertise that in the Instagram account. So that helps too. So the more we get our name out there, and I do see that people are Do you want to tell that story, Henriette, about how people stopped you the other day and wanted to help when you were planting?
Sure. Well, Gwen and I were crossing the street from Town Hall to go over to the green. And, and Gwen was, was pulling the little red wagon full of plants. And as we were going into the mall parking lot, a woman was driving out of the parking lot. And she saw us and she asked, oh, are you part of that group that does all that planting? And we said yes. And she said, oh, I want to help, I want to help. And actually, she may be coming on Saturday. Her name is Pauline. So we, we were chatting while we were standing there in the, in the entrance to the mall. And Gwen asked her where she lives and she said Norman Drive. And I said, oh, really? Well, I grew up, grew up on Norman Drive. And she said, well, what number? And I said 12. And she said, well, I live at 12 Norman Drive. So that was, that was quite remarkable, you know, to just in that moment, meet the woman that lived in my childhood home. So you never know who you might meet.
I think that's a great story. And, you know, I am so grateful, and I know Dan is too, for all the work that we do to make it special for the town. And I really have decided, I may not have it in this budget for the end of June, but in July, if I don't have a money, money before then, I want us to have t-shirts this year. And on the back, they're going to say BBC volunteer, very large. So when we're bending over planting, they're not gonna be looking at our pity coats. They're gonna be looking at our shirts that say, you know, who we are. And I think that would be good, you know, it's like our uniform. When I had my business, I always had a t-shirt that identified who we were. And because how can anybody say anything if, if they, if you're just a stranger? So this way, and we know that every time we go somewhere to plant, people stop and talk to us or ask something or say you're doing a great job. And so it's a reflection on us and the community and the town. So
I get a lot of compliments from people at church and how nice, you know, how well the town looks and how much we're taking care of it. And how they thank us, really.
Yeah, that's great. Well, I want to do that. I want to make sure I get everybody's t-shirt sizes. So I'll send my, we'll, we'll send the list around again. I think I got people on Friday, but I just want to make sure I have all your, your numbers.
Hey Sharon, maybe we should think about bringing back the Panthers.
Yeah, I, I think they're sitting up at the top of my street. Yeah, we might have to bring those back. We'll have to bring something, a Fall Panther. Okay, we'll move along because it's now 6:12 and they'll be joining us soon. So I mentioned the tree watering, told you about that. I just wanted to tell you the Farmington River Park, I ordered a tree for there. And there is a hike, if any of you are interested, Trails Day is June 5th. And Paula and Kevin are giving like a two, two and a half mile hike. And they're going on the river, you know, along the river up to the sand dunes. And they're, they're giving commentary too. And they're both knowledgeable about this area, the birds, what's going on there and even what's being developed. So I've signed up for it. You can go to the Wittenberry Land Trust site. To me, that's the easiest. Go to events. You go to wittenberylandtrust.org and then you go in the, look at the top and go to events. And then scroll down and you just look for Trail Days and they has a place where you can sign up. It brings you to a link at Leisure Services and then you sign up there. And they also have a hike, I believe, the same day scheduled in the afternoon at Seaberry. This is Trails Day. And they have one, another one scheduled also that day. So watch for Trails Day. It's June 5th. And June 6th, I believe. Okay. So the, the, so the Farmington River Park, we, we got, we got our grant for $1,500. So I purchased a tree. We're in the process of Dan getting it, a hack berry to put there and some other plantings. I have some other plants that will go in and we'll talk about that, but we probably won't get to that until after Memorial Day. And I'll just send out some notices about that. The tree planting has been, for the Arbor Day is still going on as far as the watering. Very grateful to DPW. They're gonna be checking every week. They're filling in the bags with water. I rode by. Every tree looks great.
Yep.
There's still only one tree, Hector. Hector, I need, I know these, these young girls who planted him, named him, but he was not looking good. The leader, the major leader's dead. So I called the nursery and I'm hoping, they say they don't do warranties, but they could look at it and know it was not in good shape. And so I'm hoping they'll replace it. And Dan said he would pick it up for us, so we'll be able to replant that tree. The Mother's Day hike was great. Lucy led that with Kevin Wilcox and Zalene Sandler. And there were about maybe 25 people on the hike, various ages and people. And they did a great job. And it was a good, it was a really good hike. And I think people were impressed with the Farmington River Park, many of them not even knowing about it and saying, wow, this is a good park. We need to know more about it. So, and I see our guests have joined us. If you'll just hold on one minute, we're just finishing up our updates and our old business and then we'll get to you. The last thing was our tree care and pruning workshop, which was this past Saturday. We had eight people sign up. Now, this was the first time we had something where only four people showed. But we had it at the Branch Library and those people who came, it was really interesting. A lot was learned about the top proper tools you use when you prune shrubs and trees. And we were able to do some pruning at the Branch Library. I know with the new building being planned for there, many of these shrubs and plants will disappear. But there are a few trees, since the library committee is here, to know that some of those were dedicated in memory of people. And the library asked me to ask you to please consider that they not be, you know, thrown away. That they be, you know, placed in another place in another position on the property. So that concludes our old business and I'm gonna go into new business. And I'm very happy to welcome Greg Davis, the Chair of the Library Committee. Welcome Greg. And Mark Weisman, Architect in Town, very, he's been involved with both libraries and planning. And two people who have the town at heart of what's, you know, needed for our libraries. And so without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Greg, I assume. And if you want to share the screen, Dan will.
Okay.
I can help him with that.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us here this evening. It's a pleasure to be in front of you. The Library Builder Committee met with the council last night for our second time. We had previously met with council in February. Sort of updating them on the status of our progress with respect to the building committee. Sharon introduced Mark. Everyone in town knows Mark, but Mark has been tremendous, sort of helping steer the, the project. And again, we're excited to be here. I'll just share a little bit and then we're gonna share the screen and talk a little bit about where we are and what we envision and would love to hear some feedback from you all. Vis a vis the project and our draft study. And I'll just, I think people already know about the building committee and what we do. But I will say that we are a diverse building committee. We have 16 members, nine voting members, eight ad hoc members. Diverse with respect to gender, race, party affiliation, vocation and age. We're all very committed to the town and to this building, library building project. We're very excited. One of the things that we first came to terms with is that we could not do anything with one library. We needed to make an impact on the entire system so that we wanted to, we said we couldn't do one without the other. So we made a decision to, or a recommendation to build a new building at Prosser and an addition and renovation at McMahon. We'll, we'll go through those shortly. But again, we're very excited about the process. And I've talked a lot about the process and just to show you some of the commit by, commitment by our committee members. We have had, our first meeting was on July 29th of last year. And we've had 22 full committee meetings, four special meetings. And we have three subcommittees, which have had a total of 30-plus meetings. We have been very engaged with the community. We did a survey a couple of months ago and we received about 1,700 responses from folks in Bloomfield. Almost, I think, more than 500 from students. So we really wanted to get the voice and opinion of our young people because in essence, when I look at the library building project, I really think that the, the buildings are for our children and their children, not so much for me. But it's really sort of the, the new generation of people who will be impacted and using the library into the future. In addition to that, we did a, a phone campaign where we made more than 2,000 phone calls to residents in and around the McMahon Library on Blue Hills in District 3. We wanted to gauge your thoughts about the process, what we were doing. And also invited them to the public information sessions. We held two of those. We held one in April, which was via Zoom, and we had, I think, about 70 people participate in that process. And then we had an in-person public information session at McMahon on the 1st of March. And we were very excited and pleased with the turnout at both. We had probably four or five council members participate in those public informational sessions. But more importantly, we had an opportunity to hear from the public. We've also had three articles in the Messenger, really trying to keep the community engaged and abreast as to what we're doing and sort of the next steps. And we really see this as a perfect opportunity for the town to really showcase the importance of the library system. And when we talk about the library, the Director Elizabeth has impressed upon us that there are three libraries. We have the Prosser, we have the McMahon and we have the BPO online. And so we really focused on the entire library system and we're excited about the draft studies that we have for both buildings. And I'm going to shoot it over to Mark and we'll sort of get the, excuse me, the proposal up and and answer some questions.
Thanks, Greg. So, so we're, we're shooting for a referendum in November. And so everything that's occurring now is quote unquote, the pre-referendum phase of the project. So basically, we're trying to describe the project in enough detail that people understand what's gonna happen, what might happen. Make sure the budget is adequate to, to do everything we need to do. Our subcommittees have been busy doing programming and outreach. And, you know, making sure that this is doable. So to that extent, it's really a minimum level of design at this point. So we're really here mostly to obviously show you where we're at, but to hear from you. And, and what your considerations are and what they will be going forward. Should it pass referendum in November, then the, the true phases of design will, will start schematic, design development, construction documents, and then ultimately bidding. And that will take, you know, nine, 10 months or more. So we'll be back to you, you know, as things are developed, so we can get further input. So this is a chance for you to start making us aware of things that we want to include in this, in this project. So I'm gonna put up the presentation from the architect that was given last night. the presentation from the architect that was given last night. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
So this was, this was our update to the Town Council last night. And I'm gonna, not everything will will apply here, but at least you'll you'll see where we stand. The, let's see if I can advance this. There we go. Okay. So a little introductory about TSKP Studios out of Hartford, our architects. They're really known around the state as the gold standard of libraries. And they had been with us in two thousand sixteen when we looked at Prosser at that time. So they've a great library experience. They have offices in Hartford and Boston. I'm going to go a little quickly through this. Please tell me, slow down if you need me to. Their work in Bloomfield, you're familiar with the Wittenberry Early Childhood Magnet School. More recently than that, they did the High School Library Edition. And they've included a couple of other libraries in here around the state that they've designed. Wilton. Summers, I believe was addition renovation. They're really known for light and bright and inviting spaces. This is Hartford Public Library, one of the branches there. Some specialized interior spaces as well at the Hartford Public Library Branch and the main they were involved in. This is a project that's wrapping up now that Greg is involved with Park Street Library Branch. And they've got some interesting styles going on there, cityscape, obviously. But this is our project. And so this is, this is the center of town. And the building committee has reached a point where we recommended knocking down the existing Prosser Library. We can certainly get into the rationale behind that. And building a new Prosser in its place, that's this orange block here. And you can see the First Congregational Church over here, Town Hall down here below, and the center green. So since the the town purchased the Riley Lumber Yard over here to the west, that the concept is that that will serve as the main parking for the for the library. There will be a footbridge over Washbrook. And one of the advantages of keeping the library here, using Riley Lumber is is being able to tie in this whole thing with Philly Park. So everybody's kind of excited about that. You know, it's the beginnings of something bigger here that links everything together. I know the architect is very excited to to be, this site is so prominent in town. That's just so significant. So let's get to the so here we're looking at the main floor plan. And just recently, the architect took it a little bit beyond concept and filled it up with furniture so that our committee could look and see how things really might work. Again, it's all going to be subject to a lot more design in the coming year. But the concept here really is the main concept is is this link of the footbridge from the main parking area, which then becomes a porch area in the front of the building. Outdoor porch where there are entrances, main entrance to the library, evening entrances that bring you to a community room that can be that can function when the rest of the library is closed. And this porch then opens up to a grade level plaza at the at the intersection. Now, they've superimposed on this the the roundabouts that we keep hearing about from the state. So that you can see how all that works together. There's the roundabout at the end of Wittenberry and the roundabout at the main intersection here of Mountain Tungus and Park. And so right now in concept, there is a drop off area in the front still. But the the traffic really, main parking, like I said, on the Riley site, there is handicap accessible parking under the building here. This is basically similar to the driveway that's there now. Come in under the building, exit at the far end. And the reason why we have this underneath, we'll take a look at this little historical reference to that front porch that inspired Tai Su's office in this design. So let's look on the left hand side is that lowest level of the building. This is the driveway coming through with some some parking, handicap parking. And really, the only part of the building that touches down here is the elevator and stairway. So there is an accessible access. So the main entrance being by the footbridge and the porch. The rest of it is unexcavated. You're probably aware that the current library, the lower floor, was actually designed and built below the flood plain. So it's had a few times serious flooding. And there really is no cure to that. It can be mitigated to some extent, but it can't be stopped. That was one of the reasons why we felt that a new building was was the way to go. The entire building is lifted up a little bit more than than the present building so that it will not flood. On the right hand side is the upper floor with the stacks, study rooms, staff spaces. Portion of the building is a two story space, the main, the main area that opens out to Tungus Avenue here. This is a section through the building. So you can see the the footbridge here. Cross Washbrook leading to the porch. Of course, we're cutting through the building here in this view. Parking, limited parking underneath and accessible access and then out to the plaza space here in Tungus Avenue. So this is a existing, we have now. And this was our first look at a concept that we saw a couple of weeks ago from from TSKP. Again, the front porch area and some shaded carefully placed fins on the east side to shade the the glass. The architect feels inspired by the church portico in coloring it white, the colonnade. There's an introduction of some other material, probably brick behind that on the southern facade as well. But we've, the architect has received many, many, many comments about this. And is continuing to develop this. We have some other concepts here shown. This is a more stylized rendering, computer rendering that shows the building at night. And I think you can see that inviting where indoors and outdoors start blending together. People realize as you pass by what's going on. I do want to point out, and and this is a significant for your committee, that you will notice there is only one tree in the front of this building shown. There are two trees there now. The architect has stated an intention at this point to remove the the southern tree based on its condition. I know that he has reached out to Dan for advice. See if this is really sound thinking or not. We are talking about solar panels on the roof as well. I think that that was not the driving force of removing the tree. So, you know, we're waiting for some advice on that, whether that does in fact make sense based on the condition of the tree. The architect, like I said, has received many, many comments in the past few weeks, so he's been looking at enhancing these elevations in different ways, lowering the scale a little bit. And this, these elements seem to pop out more for development. Some clear story moon, half moon windows across the top. Perhaps a balcony within this porch area to break down the scale, some arched windows. So it's still, this is still in process. So that is Prosser. We move on to McMahon, existing McMahon Library, kind of understated. Pushed back from the street. And the initial concept that TSKP architects came up with is is to add on this orange is an addition. The purple is the existing building. And to bring to bring the building closer to Blue Hills Avenue, make it more inviting, make it make it have a presence. And the amount of square footage seemed to work out well programmatically. So again, the gray area is existing building. The white area in the front is the proposed addition, which would house adult space, small cafe, some meeting spaces, large and small, small conference room and a small community room. The existing would be converted to a dedicated teen space, staff offices and children's area. So there's a flow right through the building. A parking remains in the rear with an entrance as it is now, but with a another entrance in the front, which I think expresses something very good in Blue Hills Avenue. So here you can see the whole floor plan together. And this is the vision of that from Blue Hills Avenue. The concept is to raise the roof up higher than the existing building behind it, so there can be windows all around, bringing light all around and make it a real exciting, inviting place. People want to know what's going on inside, outside. So I think you can see at this point, there's been no landscaping developed, certainly opportunities for all of that as we move forward. And that's where we like, you know, your input, another view from a little further north. And just for your information, we do have a cost estimator on board down down construction. And the what you see so far, the Prosser is sitting at about twenty two point six million dollars. And the McMahon project at five point nine million dollars. This again is is getting fine tuned. We're looking to do some solar panels on the roof. This information just came in within the last week. But Prosser, this design of Prosser is really right for that. So we're looking at that. And here, actually, you can see in this view on the left hand side, the tree with the red outline remains and under this concept, the the tree in the green circle would be removed. And we went through various scenarios with solar, which we'd be glad to share with you. We've been following that a pretty strict schedule to get us on board for referendum in November. And should we pass in November, then this is the schedule moving forward where all design would be completed, let's see, somewhere in September. And bidding would would go forward September, October. So that is, I'm going to go back to the site plan for Prosser. We'll be happy to entertain questions and all all the comments that you can share.
I say something, could we start at the McMan first and end up?
Sure, sure.
And Mark, may I just add, as I think Mark already alluded to, on June the fourteenth, we'll be appearing in front of the council again, and we hope to have enhanced or modified computerized renderings of the two sites by the architects. And we can share this presentation with you all following this meeting, if you like.
That would be good. Thank you. Thank you both. This is very enlightening. Good to see. I'm I'm not going to dwell on it right now. I'm going to let my committee first ask questions. So would anybody in the committee like to comment first before I do on the Wittenberry site plan? Do we have anybody wanting to comment? Okay, don't hear anybody. So I'm sorry, who who wants to comment?
Andrea.
Okay, Andrea.
I I very much like the plan for the McMahon Library. I really love the front of it and the openness. I like I like that a lot. I think it's very well planned and executed.
I agree, Andrea. I do agree with that. Yeah, especially Blue Hills will bring a little, you know, addition of something aesthetically beautiful to Blue Hills.
Yeah.
Does anybody else who wants to say anything? Okay.
Karen, if if I may, this is Dan. Just from a public works perspective, first of all, I just want to thank Mark and Greg for taking the time to to come before the BBC. You know, Public Works has learned a lot in the last two years with the Human Services Building being rebuilt and with Public Works being renovated. And it's it's exciting to see these these things coming to Bloomfield. We all know that the libraries of nineteen seventy, the whole business has changed, right? It's 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 almost like a collection point. Libraries are meeting spaces and community areas. And from but but that's that's speaking about the the business of library science. But from my perspective, you know, obviously, we have a responsibility to maintain the building, the grounds, the facility. So one of the things that we're learning with the Human Services Building, where there are soft costs in all of the outlying years. So all the new buildings, the building technology now, there are building automation systems. And they're computerized and there are annual costs associated with that. The access control system, sliding doors, fobs, all of those things, security systems, fire suppression systems. Those things all have annual costs going forward, which you know, we are just kind of figuring that out for the Human Services Building. So those are types of things that I would just need to know in advance. Those are system, that's the future. That's the the business of facilities management now. But there are annual costs moving forward, so I need to budget in advance. So I would like to, if the committee could provide me with anticipated annual costs to maintain all of the building automation systems. As far as the grounds are concerned, you know, the the Bloomfield Beautification Committee, if if they added up all their hours that they have provided to the town, it would probably even surprise them. So for me, I do snow removal. Our department does snow removal and we maintain grounds. You know, we traditionally have cut grass and maintained properties. We are not gardeners. So I just would like the committee to keep that in 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 their in their understanding when they're developing landscaping and and other features on the grounds of the property. If if they're going to have grounds that need additional maintenance besides, you know, traditional for us, mowing grass, trimming shrubs, mulching. You know, we just need to know that in advance. And if the decision is made that that's the direction that they're going or that's what they want to do, that's perfectly fine with me. I just need to be able to put a cost on it and provide that to the council for budgetary reasons and, you know, in the coming, in the forward years. But overall, I think the plans are great. It's 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 exciting to get new facilities in town. And I think I think the committee has really done a nice job. And like, again, I just want to thank you guys for coming to the BBC and letting us get our input on the building, the grounds and the project in general. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Okay, thank you, Dan. I'd like to comment, but I'd like you to change the picture, please, to the front design. Yeah, that's fine. I really like this design. I, I think it, there's no really. Definition of this area of Blue Hills, so this can be a real statement. It's open in areas, the others said. I do have some concerns about the landscaping. I know that this is just a draft and there's more to go. But if I were to offer my input, this happens to be one of the noisiest, loudest streets in this town. Lot of cars go up and down the street. I see, you know, there's no indication here of any places to be outside. And one of the things I hope you'll keep in mind is that, and I was talking to Elizabeth about this, that. Unlike libraries of the past, people also like to go outside and they are designing a free wifi. In the back of the library now so that. People from the library can go outside and either look at their laptops or their cell phones or do their homework or something. But really having them be a little bit more compatible with nature. And I, I'm hoping that that will be taken in consideration. I realize that, you know, I hear what Dan is saying about the maintenance that's required, but. I also feel that in a, in a landscape plan, you needs, in an outside landscape plan, you need some softening of the landscape. And that I would like to see some benches or chairs, you know, some kind of seating capability. I see somebody sort of sitting on the wall, so it could be that it's being designed as, you know, a place where people can sit. I don't think people are going to lie on the grass very much, so it would be nice to have. That capacity to, to, you know, be outside. I would hope there might be some shrubbery in the front of this building again. To soften the sounds because there's a lot of sound that goes, you know, in front of this street. And so I, I would like to make that suggestion. We're only seeing the front of the building, so I don't know, I assume the parking will all remain in the back, which is. Nice. And these sidewalks do go up and down Blue Hills, so I, I, I do see that people could come. Up the sidewalks and into the building and, and like that it's open because as people do ride by, they can see that. So that would be my suggestions. And as I said before, there was a request from the librarian that one of these trees in the front. Was a dedication to one of the libraries who was honored after she passed away. So. I would hope that, you know, when the landscapes become considered. And you remove things, that some of those things either be recycled to other areas in town. Or, and especially the tree be saved and put somewhere, you know, whether it go in the back or not, but be used. So that's my comments on this building. And again, like Dan was saying, I do thank you both. This is really. You know, very nice to see this kind of architecture here being open. That, that to me is like key see inside a library.
Sharon, if I could just interject and say that Elizabeth and her team are very excited about the outdoor area. Because we want it to be as inviting outside as it is inside. And again, with this rendering, it was just the building because the architect is really working against the clock. So they have not even been.
Okay, well, that's what I, I figured. But I did want to say that because, you know, if I don't say it, and he said, well, we didn't think about that. You know, just want to make that mention. And I know that's why I was also asking because I knew she was interested too. What happens to the right side of the building? Is that an extension to the concept? Is that another kind of space? Yeah. To the right, is that like a community room?
Uh, yeah, there's a. Going from the glassed in space, first there's a. Cafe area at the end of the glass and then there are. There's a conference room and then. A conference room here and then a small community room at the end.
Okay, and the state would put in a crossing lines, allowing you to get across the street?
I'm not sure what's there now, if anything, but certainly it's a good consideration, we should note.
Absolutely, because I mean, it is a busy, busy street.
And, and one more thing that I wanted to add with respect to the programming space, the committee along with the library team has designated. Winton Berry to be the teen center for the town. So that the teen space at McMahon Winton Berry will, will be probably almost twice this, I don't know if it's twice the size, but much larger than the space. At Prosser because Elizabeth has shown and her team have indicated that McMahon gets a lot of teens and younger people. So we want to make sure that we have a space that is inviting for, for that age group.
And is that cafe for them? And is there one at the other library too?
Yes, correct. Yes, Prosser will have a cafe as well.
And when we say cafe, we're not talking Starbucks. I mean, we're a small little area for people to. To get drinks and, and maybe vending. I'm not sure, but it won't be large.
Well, I mean, you know, there aren't a lot of places for kids to hang out. And when they have the ability to be able to come to something like this and then be able to either walk outside and sit at tables or be. Able to go into another teen room. I think that's a very, a positive for the community. Okay, any other questions anybody has? All right, well then, would you like, can we move to the, to the Prosser? Now, Prosser is totally different. And I is, I'm going to let everyone else speak first. So who would like to speak first in my group here? Do I see anybody hands? Anybody? Okay, Henriette.
Okay, um. I, I like a lot of the things that you're suggesting. I like the link to Philly Park. I like the crossover over the brook. And, and a lot of the conceptual plans for inside I like very much, but. Greg, can you go back to the picture that showed the, the artistic rendering that showed the church and the library? Thank you. To me, I feel like the, the actual plan. Of the library is shown here is really stark. When you were showing some of the other library designs, what caught my eye was the library that. Is being done for the Park Street Library, for the Hartford Public Library. And I, I really liked that combination of the really big windows coupled with the brick. And I don't know, that cap captured my attention and more than looking at, at this. I, it just feels a little out of place to me. You know, and I also totally get the idea of capturing. The columns at the church into the columns of the porch at the library. I, I, I like that idea. I just hope they're kind of kept the same. I don't know, the feel that matches the church because. The pictures that, the picture that you had of those different porches with columns. To me looked a little southern plantation and I don't think that would be a look that we would want to go for. So tho- that's my initial thought about that. Sorry.
Can I, can I interject for one moment and say that Mark, I believe that this rendering here, it's out of scale, correct?
Yeah, yes.
It looks much larger. It's not to that scale. And also Henriette, to your point, last night, we heard. A lot of comments from folks who want to see some brick. They like that Park Street look that the Hartford Public Library is building. And we've had a conversation with the architect and, you know, they're well aware of people's liking of, of the brick.
Okay, great.
I think it's, it, if, if I may, I just think that introducing brick would add some warmth. You know, our town center is very New England. In my opinion, you have the, the church spire and you have the town hall, which is brick and. The, the, the brick house on the corner of Tunxus and. What is it?
Bloomfield Ave. Bloomfield Ave.
And Bloomfield Ave. And this just does not, to me, I, I mean, I would like to see a little bit of more cohesive. Blending in with the, the, the town center. And I think that that could be achieved through. Using, you know, brick. Also, I, I have to comment on the, the, the roof line. It's flat and everything else is either a spire or. You know, has a pitch and I, I don't understand that. I like the idea of the porch. I think the columns are a little too high, but I think if, if we could bring a little more New England. Into it, that, that would be something I would favor, but. I mean, I don't know what the consensus is of the town, but as of right now, I just don't think that. It blends our town center.
Um, yeah, I, I, I'm having a problem because we've spent time and money to make a town green. And we're not making use of our town green. We're facing the south, the hottest part of the. You know, the day, we're facing not a town green. We're facing towards. You know, Bloomfield Avenue, a glimpse of the town hall. And we're not making use of our green and I don't quite understand the connection of why you would walk up. Well, actually what my question to you would be, where is the entry and is there only one entry into this building?
The, the entries, there's actually two entries from the porch. You know, one, one would be the main daily entrance.
Correct.
And the other one is closer to the community room. So it primarily would be used in evening time when. Functions are going on there.
So, you know, where would people, if they wanted to come, again, this is the thing I'm asking about the outdoor landscaping. Is if you came outside, where would you go? Are you considering any kind of landscaping for this? You, you have this corner. Kind of patio space, but it's, again, it's against the hardest part of the traffic. It will be loud and noisy. What, where would people want to come if they came outside this building? Where do you see that they might want to come and sit and take advantage of the scenery that's around this building?
Let's go back to the site plan here. So. Really, the only opportunities are. The largest opportunity is along Tunxus Avenue. You know, anywhere along there. You know, where this proposed plaza at the corner. The. The rear of the building, no. You know, because we're really elevated to get out of the floodplain. So there really is. It's not easily accessed. I suppose it could be developed into something, but it would, it would take. Yeah, it's not a good transition from inside the building to this, to the, to these, to these spaces around here. Now there could be something in relation to. On the Riley property, we haven't discussed anything like that. Really, the focus has been this, this plaza. Here as, as sort of a link, and the link to, you know, the link to town green. Sort of ties town green all the way through to the main parking lot here.
But where does this link, this plaza go? It's not, it's not a flat plaza, right?
Yes, it is.
It is flat, but there's no, there's no landscaping to it, so it's right on the street.
Well, nothing's been developed landscaping as yet. Again, this is just a, an early concept.
Does that, does that contingent on it, there being a traffic circle there or is that area right now feasible without a traffic circle?
It would be feasible without. I think it would be a little bit smaller. This. This curvature here that goes with the, with the roundabouts. It's a little more cut off here and straighter. But essentially, most of that plaza would be feasible without the. Without the roundabout. It works either way.
Is that a sitting plaza? Is it just a walking to get? Because there's no entrance to the front side, to the east side of this building. Am I correct?
Well, the, the, the entrance is really here at the corner. The porch, you know, spills out onto that. So you would enter, you can enter the porch from the east side. You can enter the porch from the west side. And once you're on the porch. You enter the building proper. So, so this really hasn't, Sharon, this really hasn't been developed at all in terms of, but that's, you know, if you have ideas about. I, I think it needs to be all of the above myself, you know, a place where you want to be, where you want to sit and lunch for you, you know, and, and. You know, your comments about busy traffic. Are well taken. I don't know if anybody has seen the presentation that our town engineer has about. These roundabouts and the transition from. In, in a, a traffic lit. Intersection to a roundabout. It's a wonderful presentation example somewhere in Pennsylvania. A town similar to ours, where residents were totally against this. Oh my God, the traffic doesn't stop. How do you cross all this? And they implemented it and then they go back to all the people and talk and. Traffic goes slower. I'll only have to cross one lane of traffic at a time. So it's a lot more friendly to pedestrians than. You know, than waiting for a crosslight forever. So, you know, people, the traffic really, it does not stop, but it generally flows a lot slower. Than people whizzing through a, a green light.
Okay.
I mean, and that's not to say there's not going to be a lot of traffic, of course, you know, the, the amount of traffic will be the same.
And Mark, could I ask you, so it appears that your sidewalk is really a distant, is that like thirty feet or so from your building? And that to the left, there is a dumpster. Right in the front of your building now. In places in town, I've seen other buildings built where they put the mechanicals in the front of the building, which really is just, you know, not attractive.
Yeah, we have, we have not discussed that at all. It has appeared there in this concept plan. But. You know, our, our feeling is it will probably not stay there. You know, I think there needs to be a better solution for the dumpster. I think that's a, a good.
And on the Tunxus Avenue side, the distance between the building and the actual street, is that, how similar is it to what the current? Distance is, is this bigger or is it?
I think it's, it's a little bit closer. Than it is now. Of course, the, of course, the building is set, you know, has two, has an L to it right now. Let's look at. These are photographs. You know, the building, its closest point is along this end, the northern end of the building, and it steps back a little bit. So I am. I don't have a good shot that shows the existing building. Underneath, no, we don't have that. I, I think. It's probably similar, you know, I'm looking at this existing large tree here and its relationship to the building. I don't think we can get any closer than the building is now. So it's, it's similar. Of course, with the, with the roundabout plan, the road does move a little bit further away.
And where's the other tree? Why is it that you have to take the other tree down?
The other one, the other one is adjacent to it here. I think the architect wanted to open it up more visually. But, I mean, it was based on his analysis of the condition of the tree, which we want to confirm, of course.
I'd like to see that confirmed because, you know, we have a few very major old trees in our town green. And the more we cut them down, we lose that character of it being a town green. I understand with construction how, you know, they make it more vulnerable. But if there's a way. But if there's a way to save them, that would be good.
And I, I believe the architects are working with the town and in fact Dan's, uh. Group about, uh, taking a look at those trees and giving us their opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, and I also wanted to add that obviously with this building, it's very important to us that it be very beautified, you know, beautified outside. And the landscaping, so I mean, we will look forward to, uh, your group's, you know, comments and feedback because I think that will make it. Stand out, you know, it, we open and inviting, but outside needs to be just as beautiful.
Uh, um, I appreciate that. I, I mean, I think, um. We all want it to connect to the, to the center. Um, again, I, I just. Feel like we're not connecting to the town green. We're facing away from the town green. Now, I think what I understand from your plan, when you're inside, you do look out to the town green, but I, I didn't hear whether. It's planned that there's any kind of seating there, or it's, it's not a porch or anything, correct, on the, uh, east side?
I, I know, right, the only, the, the only, um. Uh, entrance, if you will, i- is at the corner. Is, um, you know, on the east side here at the corner, basically is where you enter the porch. Here, um, and right now, nothing's, nothing's been talked about or planned yet. For that, uh, green area outside on the east side.
So by saying that, are you saying that if you wanted to connect along, say, there was a person who left, but she asked the question. Would there be a footpath parallel to Washbrook that could lead all the way down to Philly Park? But if you follow that, on the north side of this building, there's no way to go into this building. So anybody who comes to this, you can only come in from one area, you have to come in to the south side of the building. Is that correct?
Well, it's, I really look at it like you're coming in from the east or the west. Because from the, from, from the south, there is a driveway. Uh, or, and a sidewalk going underneath.
Okay.
So there's that, uh, but from the east, your entrance is here. From the west, it's the footbridge. So it's really kind of porous along that whole. Uh, south side kind of wrapping around the, to the east and west. I mean, the majority, the vast majority of people, uh, I, I would say are going to be entering on the footbridge. Uh, followed second by drop offs. Or pedestrians from the town green area from the east, this way. Uh, would probably be, you know, the parking underneath, the least used, uh, maybe staff and, um. Uh, handicap accessible parking.
Okay, and was there any consideration to your parking lot? You have everybody, so say if you park at the far end, on the north side, you got to walk all the way up to this footbridge to get across. Was there any consideration of putting the footbridge more in the middle so that people, you know. Everyone sort of had, could get to it without having to go long distances, or is, or is this not as long distance as it looks?
Um, you know, it's, it's probably not as long as you think it is, number one, but, uh, we did have a, uh, a preliminary plan. Where the footbridge was more centered on the new building. Uh, and, um. Entering the library at that point raised all kinds of, um, internal layout problems.
Okay.
Uh, the entrance really wants to be at one side versus centered, um, for Prosser. It works well at McMahon, no center entrance, uh, but here, there's just too much going on. Uh, hidden, you get hidden corners, um, and, um. Personally, you know, personally, I love the linkage, you know, all the way straight through, uh. You know, the, sort of the progression, um, through, uh, from the footbridge to the porch to the plaza, to the town green.
Okay, and I have one, another, one other question, where, kind of pertaining to what Dan was asking, so. Where do the. Um, delivery trucks and other types of vehicles that need to, you know. Do other kind of things other than cars, where do they park and where do they drop off here on, uh, Bloomfield Avenue? I don't, I'm not sure what this blue rectangle is, but.
Yeah, you know what, I think that's a graphic glitch, honestly. Yeah, I've been, so I've been staring at that, and I think it's, yeah, I think somebody highlighted something and took it away.
Where do they, you know, where do the mechanics?
That's something I'm doing. Rectangle. You know, that will, Sharon, that will occur, uh, at that lowest level.
Right.
Okay, and, and, okay.
I have a question, um, is there any kind of a drive? Obviously, I don't see any kind of a drive, um, by book drop. So if I wanted to drop off books, the way that I do now, it's very easy, it's very accessible, I could just drive up. I don't see anything that you would be able to, I'm not parking in Riley parking lot and walking far to drop off.
That would also occur at that lowest level.
Correct, there's a plan to make sure that that, uh, takes place.
Those, those seventeen hundred surveys we received back, that was a big item on there, making sure that there's, uh. Uh, you know, an, an easy place to drop off.
Okay. Give it a park there too, just and drop off.
The lower level is for, uh, handicap parking, right?
There's, oh, not, not only, not only, there'll be some, there are, there are other spaces there, so I think there's about twenty-four spaces there.
Oh, okay, alright. And, and to Sharon's point, I think, um, kind of the. The side of the building that faces Tungstus kind of just looks like it's a side of a building and. I don't know if anything aesthetically can be done to kind of. Ma- make it look more like it's not just the side of the building. Because with that connection to the town green and the whole town center, because now it just kind of seems like the building's blocked there. And I don't know, I, it just, it just seems to not jive with the whole, like cohesive town center look.
Yeah, well, I think the colonnade, um. Will. Will really tell you that, that it's a porch, um, a front porch. Uh, and, and I think that will be intuitive. It, uh, I mean, grade. It comes out flat at grade at the east side here. Uh, and then it meets the footbridge on the west side, gray drops away behind this. This wall, if you will, the architect was proposing signage, uh, here, uh, at this. At this wall in the trade, in the transition of grade from the, the level plaza at the intersection down. To the, um, roadway underneath. But my feeling right now is that porch will, will be very intuitive as, oh, that's where the doors are. That's, that's where I go, you know, that's, that, that's a pedestrian thing here.
So question, why, it's not, how wide is this, about fourteen or fifteen feet wide?
The architect has said exactly that, fourteen feet, yeah, at this point, yeah.
If people are walking there to come in, it's not really conducive to people sitting there, because they would be. People walking in and distracting and everything. Is there any thought of bringing the building further out on that side? Or bringing it, wrapping it around slightly to the, um. To the east so that, again, I still keep saying, why doesn't it relate to the town green? You know, it just seems like it's facing away. And then my other thing is what Joanne mentioned. All the buildings in this, in here are not flat, so was there a reason why a pitch roof? What is it, a economic thing, is it, uh, what were some of the reasons why a pitch roof? But, you know, wasn't maybe designed because it relates to the rest of the center?
I, I, it would just be conjecture on our part to, to say that. I know that, uh, um. Tai Su, uh, who, who is the main designer, obviously, um. Is partial to that in many of his, many of his designs. I think that it is a sizable building. You know, it's larger than the existing, um. Prosser, uh, and pitch roofs can, can, um. Lead to a lot of extra volume within the space. I don't know, uh, if that was rationale. Um, I think he was looking, he's been talking about looking for a more classical Greek, uh, sort of influence as well. But, uh, no, I don't, no, there's no real specific reason. I know that the, the renovation of the hardware store is flat. Uh, adjoining it, uh, it's, it's a more. More a boxy, uh, it has some details to it as well. I mean, personally, I believe, you know, a flat roof building can be well designed. Um, and, you know, I want to make sure this is a very well-designed building. Um, and I think that comes in all sizes and shapes.
Mark?
But I think enough landscaping will enhance any building.
Mark, I have a question, um, the, the roof, uh, the rise in the roof that's planned for the McMahon Library. Is, is that something to have like that elevated arch? Uh, as part of this design, because that way, like, I appreciate the fact of the solar panels on the, on the roof. I think that's a great idea. But, but even that little bit of a, you know, a rise in the front facing, facing east. Would match kind of the rise of the steeple of the church. And might, you know, kind of soften the, the flatness, just the total flatness of the roof.
We're really looking at two very different scales between this building and McMahon. So I, you know, I don't know how, you know, that could be accomplished here without. It would be really big, you know, if you start having things flying, you know, um. That's just my initial thought about that.
Just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, the architect, I, I was obviously looking for something very. Um, based on some more classical, uh, Colin, Colin A. book. But all your comments, believe it, all your comments are, um, similar to things that the committee has. Uh, stated, that town council has stated, um, so I think we're all kind of headed in the same direction here.
Yeah, well, I, I certainly appreciate you coming to us and showing this, it's, it's good to be in the beginning, you know, and. I don't know, I don't know if Dan, if he wants to say anything again about, you know. What he would have to maintain, what, oh, I did have one question, so with these, and you mentioned how much it's going to cost. Does that twenty-two million, so that, you know, et cetera, et cetera, does that include landscaping, irrigation, all those? Outside, uh, exterior?
It, it, it has, um, Downs did a, a really good job in this early stage of breaking things down and there is. Um, there are dollars in there for, uh, um, for the landscaping and I think. And I know I heard you loud and clear after the, uh, community center was completed. Um, you know, about making sure we have some irrigation in the areas that, that need it. Uh, and that goes to Dan's comment as well. That's, you know, irrigation is not part of, uh, mowing the lawn and trimming.
Right, right, and, and you know, as much as I appreciate what Dan says, I do feel that. You know, in, um, as we develop our community and add new buildings. We still want to have a landscape that's not like a, uh, um. Residential, it should be inviting, and we're also very conscientious about incorporating native plantings. And making it more going into the, you know, the twenty-first century and how we relate to our environment, so I hope that, you know. If we make our buildings healthier inside, we want to consider those same things on the outside. And then the last thing I would say, I hope that there will be some consideration of how we do connect down to Philly. I don't know if there are any future plans to take over that building, that's the office building. What will happen to that, that's after the hardware store?
Right.
And do, does this building and the hardware building still have to go before design review again?
Well, anything in Bloomfield Center District will go to Design Review Board.
Okay.
They are in the district.
Okay.
Back mark, we are meeting with them in a couple of weeks.
Uh, next week, actually.
Week, okay. Yeah, no, I, I mean, you know, it's very exciting. I hope we go to referendum on this and that. It's very much needed in both areas of town and, um, you know, it's a wonderful beginning. And, you know, like, thank you for including us.
So, you know, post referendum, there will be a, a landscape architect on board. Uh, and so we'll need to, uh, connect them with you.
Right. And, and this is part of our process. I mean, we're really, uh, pleased to be here, but, you know, we are really trying to, to hear the community. And to be responsive while, and, you know, we've gotten hundreds of ideas from people. And that's the job of the architect, but we will try and be responsive as best we can to produce the best buildings that, you know, we can for the town.
I know it's a, it's a town, if you notice, they're very loyal to their old building. And many people don't even want to see it removed, and so it will be very important that they see how, you know. How important this new building is to, and to gain their confidence that yes, we should move forward.
And we have a whole presentation as to why Prosser needs to be, you know, torn down and rebuilt, because that building itself, I mean, it's. Uh, electrical, mechanical, the roof, I mean, flooding, mold, it, it just. It, it can't withstand a renovation.
So Greg, what is the plan in the process of when the building is being torn down? Where does the Prosser Library go in, while that's happening?
Yeah, we are working on a swing space plan. Uh, we don't have a final plan yet, but Elizabeth, uh, and her team are working on it and we hope to have, uh, space for, for both locations. We've yet to decide, but we're hoping to potentially do both projects at the same time. There will be some economies of scale in doing that, but, uh, that's still to be determined.
Very good, thank you, thank you. Well, unless anybody else has any other questions, um. Good, uh, Dan, are you there? Are you good?
Yeah, no, I'm here, you know, um, you know, my interests are sustainability, so. That's, that's my only, uh, that's, that's what I'd like to leave everybody with, that, that we've got to have a project that we can live with and maintain. Um, reasonably in, in, in the outline years and, uh, and knowing what those costs will be are important to us here at Public Works. So that we can request the adequate funds to maintain the, the, the new property that we, that we create.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, bye.
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 So, Mark, uh, Dan is going to take their share of this screen, yeah.
Yeah, I think, um.
Oh, you have the screen, Mark.
I have the screen, and I'm looking for the stop share, there we go, okay.
Ah, there you are, okay, well, thanks again, that was great, um, it's nice to see all this, you know, moving forward. Nice work, thank you so much.
Thanks, thanks for all you do for the town.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, guys, really good, okay. Um, we're going to go right now to Mr. Dan Carter, you show your face, please, we're going to talk about. You can give a little report on, uh, things that are affecting the, um. BBC and what you're doing.
Yeah, so, um, you know, we've, we've been working on the grounds, we've pretty much got all the grounds done, we've been busy with the schools the last two weeks. They're got graduations coming up. Um, the graduation for the high school is in courtyard, most of you don't know, they have a. A landscaped courtyard inside their building, which we maintain, so we cleaned all that up. You know, one of the things that's come up in the last week, that large elm tree at Town Hall was taken down. Um, it's something that came on our radar about a year ago and. You know, it probably happened just in time, the tree was seriously compromised, even though it was still alive. Um, we plan on planting a white oak to replace it. Um, it is my hope that we can put it in the same location, hopefully the, um. The, the, uh, stump that's there won't impact that too much. You know, we've been very busy with roads right now, this is paving season and this really. You know, we've been very busy with roads that now. This is paving season and this really this really is, has to be our priority. Um and it's sometimes it's a challenge to juggle all the other stuff. So between maintenance of athletic fields, maintenance of properties, um you know, small projects, and then we've got roadwork, so. But this is our time. We got, we did our first phase of paving. We got through that. We've got two more phases. We have one at the end of July. We have one at the end of September. Um they really do consume a lot of our time and energy. Um but um, you know, so we're moving forward. Uh we just conducted a food drive last Wednesday at Geisler's um in honor of American Public Works Association Week. We collected over six hundred pounds of food for the Social Services Food Bank, collected almost six hundred dollars in cash. Um so that was a very successful event. It's it's a it's uh very pleased with the with the support from the community. Um you know, it's just amazing what people do. The customers of Geisler's come out and and donate, you know, of the, you know, monies and foods and for the, you know, for the for the food bank, so that was very encouraging. Um so that's pretty much what we've got going on. It's it's been crazy this year, you know. You know, we also, summer is probably our busiest season, but it's also our like, our uh our staffing is like in the summer because we don't allow vacations during uh the winter season due to snow removal, because we don't subcontract anything. So, you know, everybody who wants time off has to do it now, so everybody's taking their, trying to take their time off. We're trying to keep everything going, so. Uh for the most part, everything's been going well, and I just want to thank the committee because, you know, I've only been in town for six years and I can honestly tell you that the the town spaces have never looked so good. And if it wasn't for the hours that you guys have committed, and I think if you guys ever kept track of the hours that you do commit to the town, you'd probably even surprise yourselves with what that number is. Because um the the attention to detail and the finesse and the talent that all you people have really does show. And I think it's, it, you know, anybody who drives through town couldn't contradict that. But I just want to thank you guys.
Thank you, Dan. That's really nice to hear.
What's what's the um expected timeframe for the white oak replacement in the town center?
Well, I was gonna pick the tree up today, but that didn't happen. Um planning to pick it up tomorrow. No earlier than at the end of next week, probably.
Oh, okay, I I thought that it was sooner than that, okay.
Yeah, we'd like to try and get it in the ground soon.
Yeah, um I I have a question. So you're grinding the stump out, right?
Well, the state was gonna do that for us, but if it doesn't, if it doesn't coordinate with our time schedule, we may grind it. Um I'm not gonna put it in the exact same place because I don't think I really can. I've got to move it one side or the other. I'm gonna try and move it like ten, fifteen feet one way or the other and and put it in the ground there.
Okay, yeah. I would see that. I I have a couple of questions about, can you talk a little bit since we're the uh BBC is involved in the Farmington River Park? What we we have now uh won this um grant to do some plantings on either side of the entry, put a new sign up. And I've talked to you about putting in a new kind of walkway, bark chip walkway with um some of the bluestone that we were able to save. What kind of schedule do you see for that happening? I know there's a lot going on, so can we get an idea of where you see that might fit into the summer program?
So I've I've got to revisit. I gotta see what we've gotten done up there. I haven't been up there in a couple of weeks, so I gotta get up there again. We've got all the bluestone, we've got all the wood chips down in the uh near the old house down there. It's not gonna be next week. It's it's gonna be probably two weeks out. But um let me put it on my little hit list. You know, we we kind of were in there during the middle of the winter when we had some some time and some of the other priorities have kind of pushed us off of that, but let me let me revisit that.
So if we go, say, two to three weeks from now and we want to put plant material in, would you be able to provide the watering truck? Because I don't, is there any water there? Because we would want to water those plants in with no access to water.
There is no water there. Um I'll do my best to provide the water.
Okay.
Guess if I'm, if I if I'm out watering those trees, I mean, one more stop is in the end of the world, you know?
Just initially, like, for when we plant trees, I I know we talked Bart and I about this. We like to water in the hole when the trees go in, just help. I don't know, can you go down to the water and bring buckets of water up? Is it close enough where there's access to the water?
Yeah, not that close.
Not that close, okay. And there was never water at the house, huh?
Well, there was at one time. There was a domestic wa- well, but it's not functioning anymore. There's no electricity anymore.
Okay, so there's no, so we we would have to really judge this based on watching for rainy weather or something like that, too.
Yes, I think you should.
Okay, and um the other area that we're doing is the municipal pool. And um I guess we would want to go inside the pool too before they open because there's two planters inside. Um and I I know we couldn't mulch right away because there's a duck lying, it's laying on her eggs.
Right.
I don't know when she's.
Not sure if she's still there.
Yeah, um so again, is that something, should we notify you when we want to? You know, we're gonna go there and plant the plants in the front. I don't even know if it was mulched because they were at.
I believe it was, so it's part of our mulching schedule. Um no, you you mean, just let me know when you're going there. I mean, so it's happening. We got a couple of trees in the back that were damaged in some of the wind events over the over the winter that need to come out. Um and that hasn't been done yet either, so we're gonna, we need to get that done before June.
Okay, yeah, we will plant, our goal is to plant on Saturday, the twenty-ninth, if we can, just the front.
Yeah.
Because I I think Dave said they start sometime second week in June or something like.
Yeah, like uh after school gets out, I think. That's what they they aim for.
That should give you some time and we can do that. Um is there anybody on the committee? Do you have any questions about any of the areas that you have questions or concerns about? Anybody?
I don't, no.
All right. Thank you, Dan. That was very helpful and you've been very helpful to us and we're very appreciative of that. I mean, you know, it's nice to have um staff uh working for the town where volunteers can partner with and make a difference. And you certainly have been supportive of that, and I know I speak with me and everyone that we really do appreciate it. Okay, guys, one more. Let's see, where are we now? So um uh last discussion is discussion of maintenance of plant areas for twenty-twenty-one. So everybody knows their area basically, right?
Yes.
Except I know Joanne, I haven't talked to you and I'll I'll be in touch with you and Debbie and Lucy about what areas you can work with. You know, Eva, I was thinking that Lucy might be able to work at the electronic sign, but she works, so it'd have to be on the weekends. Okay, so um but I know what I had.
Yeah, just let me know what you what you decide to do.
Okay, so.
I'm assuming I'm working on the town hall with Daria and let me know if you want me to do the electronic sign.
Yeah, I want to get all the others involved too. So Dan, Jonathan Thiesy came to me the other day and said that he had cone flowers left over from the Philly Park uh plantings, and did I want them? And I thought that we have this large area behind the electronic sign, so we could we have already planted some cone flowers there and they will tolerate some drought. So I said I would take them. I'm still waiting to hear from him. I did tell him that we couldn't wait a long time for them, that if we were gonna get them, we need them fairly soon. And I think he said there was something like thirty to forty of them.
Wow.
So that's a sizable amount of plants they didn't plant. Um so if whatever, we also, I thought I would plant some at the Mary Hill Green too. So I I will contact him again tomorrow, so I just wanted to let the group know that we had that um those plants to take care of, okay? I think that's it, everybody. We pretty much covered everything.
Great.
And uh we, our next meeting is on, uh did I not put this in? Is, I forgot to put it in here. Okay, our next meeting is June is June and it will be the last uh Tuesday in June, which would be and we will, and we have Memorial Day, so everything will be planted up hopefully by then. And we'll have three-thirty park to plant, but the next one coming up in June, the meeting is June twenty-second. Oh no, I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, is June twenty-eighth. So our next meeting is June twenty-eighth. And in between now and June twenty-eighth, I will be calling on some of you to help with, we have to change the planters at three-thirty park. And Dan, Yvette asked me about those whisk, those fifty-five gallon drums that are in the tent at three-thirty park. I went up, I went over there and looked at them. They were full of water. They don't have drainage holes and then my suggestion was was to find some pots that would fit the lip of the um fifty-five gallon drums so that you wouldn't have to fill them up with soil. You could just have pots that sit on the lip. But I don't know what size those are and I don't even know if we can find something like that. But that was in lieu of having to fill them up with soil. Um and then just plant in those pots and put them on top.
All right, like I said, Bart over there, he could take a look at it.
The other option is what I've done before is put mulch three-quarters of the way in those planters and then put soil only at the top so that you might have better drainage, but I was concerned about the water. You know, what, where does that water go?
Can we drill a hole in the bottom of them, let them drain?
I I asked that question last year and I think those pots, the lot, those uh fifty-five gallon drums belong to the tent owner.
Uh or the tent people.
Yes, so I don't know. If if we could do that, that would make sense. And in fact, one of the, the, I noticed one of the drums they brought over was just a half drum this year, wasn't even a full one, so.
Right. Let me send Bart over, let him look at it. He's good with that.
And then we we can plant it. Uh we have uh this committee, I just want you to know that Mary, who who's been joining us, she doesn't come to the meetings, but she's a new volunteer. She's accepted the responsibility of taking care of the police department. And she's gonna water and I, she knows where the key is now and she's gonna take, make sure the planters stay maintained. And I think that's all the areas that we are taking care of. The Farmington River Park will be a new one. That's my goal, is to get that planted fairly soon. And if we can't get it all done now, we'll have to do it in the fall because it won't make sense to plant it in the heat of the summer. Because, you you know, you don't want to have to be going there every week to order, so. Um that would be that one, and I think that's all the planting areas. We're not adding anymore. Just to let you know. And the 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 town hall has the planters going up on Thursday, so that, oh. Are the loops, the irrigation loops that go in the planters, are they ready to go once we hang up the planters, the drip lines?
Yeah, they should all still be there and we'll just, we'll just make sure that they're all dripping. We'll turn the irrigation out and put the pots in.
So all the irrigation throughout town is on now?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll take care of that. Okay. So with that being said, uh do, let's see, hold on a second, do I have?
I I I have one more question.
Sure.
I June twenty uh twenty-eighth is a Monday. Did you want to have the meeting on the Mon? I have June twenty-ninth is a Tuesday.
Oh, sorry, okay, June, I'm, I was looking, did I go to the wrong month? June twenty, I'm sorry, June twenty-ninth, you're right, I'm sorry, June twenty-ninth.
Oh, I just want to make sure I have.
Catch, it it's Tuesday, June twenty-ninth. And we'll do the same procedure. Dan will send you the Zoom uh information. And then we can go from there, so.
The fifth Tuesday of the month.
Oh, here we go again.
Sorry.
Picky, picky, okay. It's the fifth Tuesday, you're right, because I was looking on the Monday, so let's go back, it would be the twenty-second of June, okay? Let's go, Tuesday, June twenty-second. Is everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
Uh you too, to see that? Usually I try to write those in, I got that off, okay? And uh very exciting because our next meeting, we will have started our notable landscapes uh nominations, so be on the lookout for gardens that you think look attractive, write down the number of the house. That's all we need for now, and if you have an opportunity and see a garden you really like, take a picture of it with your phone. And that's always a help to us. And is Risa still online? I didn't see her.
I think I saw, she left, I think.
Okay, because uh let's see, usually she goes to the assessor's office and looks up all the names of the people who get nominated, so we can put them on the list. All right, so do I hear a mo- a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Eva, and do I hear a second?
A second.
Henrietta. All right, so a- all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no extension, so we are officially adjourned. And Dan, thank you, maybe we can get a recording of the meeting, that would be helpful too. Uh you're on mute, I can't hear you, Dan.
Sorry.
Yeah.
They all get posted on the YouTube.
Okay, fine, yes, so anybody needs to look at anything. And thank you, Daria, again for taking the minutes tonight. I look forward to seeing them, okay? Right on Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll see you on Saturday.
Saturday.
And Thursday, right, okay, bye-bye.